I'll entertain the motion, go ahead, executive.
I'll do it.
Second. I want everyone in the executive session to take their question. All opposed?
Motion to come out of the executive session.
Second. Alright, cross second for discussion. I want people coming on with executive session, take your question. All opposed, take your question. Now we need to certify the executive session results. Whereas the Tazewell County Council convened an executive session on the state pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom Information Act and whereas 2.1-344.1 in the Code of Virginia required certification by this council that such executive session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be a result of the Tazewell County Council hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive session to which this certification requirement or resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convened in the executive session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Tazewell County Council. So I need a roll call vote to certify. Councilmember Beasley.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Hankins.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Aye.
Alright, there was no public issues to discuss. So next we're gonna jump right into the public session. So if you'd please stand with me for a pledge of belief and certification.
With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Nathan, please make a statement.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much that we can gather tonight and do so publicly, exercise our constitutional rights this evening, Lord. Thank you for being where we are served. We thank you for those who are here to present the assiduous calls of peace over this meeting, and we thank you that we have the privilege to gather here, in Jesus' name, amen.
First on the agenda is our special presentation request. Just here to curse with the Billy Wagner tribute.
Should've brought my water here with me. My allergies would kick in. Honorable mayor Hoops and esteemed members of the town council, I'm honored to provide an update on an initiative that's been gaining momentum in our community, one that pays tribute to a beloved figure while enriching Tazewell's charm and economic vitality. With strong community support, the Billy Wagner Tribute Park on Main Street is moving forward, bringing us closer to realizing this vision. Billy Wagner, as a Tazewell High School graduate, will be inducted into the MLB Baseball Hall of Fame on July 27, 2025, in Cooperstown, New York. His election marks a historic moment as he becomes the first left-handed reliever and the first Virginia-born player to be honored in the Hall of Fame, as well as in the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame, solidifying his legacy as one of the greatest relief pictures in the sport. I'd like to take a moment and share a short YouTube video. Y'all have all my time. Yeah.
It's the only thing the advertisement's gonna be.
That's how they explain it.
Yeah. That's what I expected. Like an all-state. All-state stuff, man.
This isn't the same one.
The other team did too. I loved playing behind you for nine seasons with the Astros, although a lot of those night games didn't include much work for us on the infield.
Billy Wagner has been just knocking them down. Striking out. Missed ball in. Striking this. Long game in the air.
I had fun competing against you after you left Houston, but you know, I can't even remember how I did it.
Get hard to deep left field, going back out in his burrow, and the track looks up, that ball is gone. Great physios, twenty under the ear.
The truth is, the only reason I had a chance against you is that I paid such close attention to how you worked for so many years. Hitters would come to the plate thinking they had a chance, believing they could stay on top of the ball. They knew your arm angle, they knew your stuff, and knew you mattered.
The point of each feet off, and that's as good as I've seen it throw all year.
You're one of only two pitchers to retire with at least 900 career innings and an ERA under 2.5. The other shared your excellent taste in interest music. In Cooperstown, they tell stories about the greatest players in the game's history. Well, no one has written a story quite like yours.
Come on in this, Wagner strikes out the side.
Let's start with the fact that you're a natural righthander. Really? I didn't believe it either, but you shared the story before, broke your right arm twice by the time you were set, so you started throwing baseballs with your left arm. Eventually, you were able to do that at 100 miles per hour with pinpoint command.
Wanted to escape the blaster.
Sounds like a Hall of Fame story to me. You proved what we love most about baseball, that the greatest talents can come from the smallest places. With your determined work ethic and absolute belief in yourself, you earned every opportunity. You graduated from high school in Tazewell, Virginia, a town fewer than 5,000 people. At Fairleigh College, you played so well that Major League Baseball scouts found their way to watch a 5'10" lighther from a Division III college in Virginia. And at the 1993 MLB Draft, the Astros made you the 12th overall. In the years that followed, you made seven All-Star teams for four different organizations. You were more dominant than ever in 2010. While pitching for Hall of Fame with Bobby Cox, you finished with the lowest ERA of any season in your career, you saved 37 games, and helped the Braves to the playoff berth.
The last regular season inning pitched by Billy Wagner in the big leagues, he strikes out the side.
And then you walked away, 39 years old, still at the peak of your powers. It was the right time for you and your family to move on to a new chapter. I've expected your decision then, and I admire you even more now. You could've pitched a couple more years and added more saves to your resume, but you didn't need to do that. Those of us who played with you and against you know how dominant you were, and we know where you belong, now and forever.
So if you can see, one of the ladies running the seat in baseball is from Tazewell, Virginia. The vision for the Billy Wagner Tribute Park took shape because of his legacy, a legacy rooted in determination, excellence, and his unwavering ties to baseball. His achievements from high school standout to MLB Hall of Fame inducting serve as an inspiration for generations. It is only fitting that our town honors one of its own with a space that embodies both his journey and the values we hold dear. To bring this vision to life, a committee was quickly formed, comprised of dedicated individuals committed to honor and will Billy Wagner's legacy while enriching our community. Their collective expertise and passion have been instrumental in shaping the direction of this project. The committee members are, have you got everything to check out?
Yeah, well.
If you wanna stand, if you are on this committee, if you would please stand and let them know who all is on there.
Thanks to their dedication, the Billy Wagner Tribute Park is progressing steadily
toward becoming a cherished landmark in Tazewell. Their leadership, along with the unwavering support of our residents, continues to drive this initiative forward. There were two other slides here that would bore you today, but actually called, you know, the progress that we've made, the meetings that we've held, the progress of each meeting during that time where we just collaborate, put in some feedback, get, you know, draw our ideas around. And then the next slide was on Main Street, remains ideal location serving as both a tribute to Billy Wagner and a vibrant space for tourist recreation and cultural engagement. Over the past months, we have engaged local businesses, artists, and town leaders to ensure the park reflects identity and values of Tazewell. By integrating a beautifully designed memorial space, we will create opportunities for year-round events and outdoor activities, ensuring Billy Wagner's legacy continues to inspire future generations. As part of this initiative, we remain committed to preserving Tazewell's cherished traditions. The annual tree lighting ceremony and community sending will continue to take place, ensuring that Main Street remains a gathering place for residents to celebrate, root, collect, and create lasting memories. Additionally, we are honored to be working closely with Billy Wagner himself, who has expressed his excitement about this project, shared the picture for the statue, and is just involved with every single step. We don't do anything without his approval. He is thrilled to see his statue take its place on Main Street, a fitting tribute in the heart of the town that shaped his journey to baseball greatness. We remain committed to financial responsibility, mitigate costs, we are actively pursuing tourism and revitalization grants that support heritage preservation and economic development. Additionally, local primaries and efforts and community partnerships are reinforcing the strong support for this project. Through strategic collaboration, the Billy Wagner Tribute Park will enrich Main Street's appeal while strengthening our town's identity. We are honored to have Mariah Kirby Smith and Linda Somonowski committing their expertise to this initiative. Their extraordinary work and the figurative portraits sculptures shaped by their extensive experience will ensure Billy Wagner's tribute is both visually and strikingly deeply meaningful. These ladies are well-known for their coal miners memorial project in Richlands, Virginia. It is a powerful tribute to the hardworking men and women of the mining industry. Their capability to capture both physical detail and emotional depth in their sculptures makes them the perfect artists to bring Billy Wagner's legacy to life. As we've met with them, they have even measured his shoe size, his height. They are so in tune to the detail, and with the memorial in Richlands, they even went down into the mines and met with the miners to make sure that they had every factor just perfect. So at this time, I'd like to introduce and invite Mariah and Linda to share their vision and just a little bit about themselves with you.
Good evening. Thank you for advising me for this, um, from being here. Can prospectively be part of this project? I'm Mariah Kirby Smith, from Camden, South Carolina. But I was born in Fort Belvoir, Virginia. So I'm native Virginia. Linda is from Texas. Um, perfect.
Well, here, we've been there before, and we looked at the site, at the committee here at the corner of Main and Marion. And based on that, when we first talked with them, they talked about having the sculpture placed towards the back of that park area, but we decided, you know, looking at it, consideration of moving it forward. So when you're driving down the street, as you're on Main, you'll see it as you're driving down Main on your left, and they're coming from the other direction, just before maybe you have a block, you can see it as well, because if it's too far back, you'll miss it driving through. And people walking through the park, this safety of it, looks like a great location, and what they're planning to do in that area to make it work, I feel that that's a great location for that sculptural design. I hope everyone else appreciates and reads that, because it's important to know, I mean, it's like a little state, location, location, location. And so where that sculpture is gonna reside will make a great addition to the Main Street. So I look forward to working with y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. They really truly are amazing in the work that they do, and they have works throughout that you've posed. It's just, if you get a chance, Google them and check some of their work out. This initiative is more than a tribute. It is an investment in Tazewell's future. By moving forward, we will foster tourism, support local businesses, and create a landmark that will be cherished for generations. With this update, we ask for the town council's blessing and continued support as we move into the next phase of planning and development. Your endorsement will further strengthen our ability to secure funding, rally community involvement, and ensure this park becomes a meaningful addition to Main Street. By advancing this project, we not only preserve the legacy of Billy Wagner, but also invest in the vibrancy of Tazewell itself. This park shall stand as a lasting reminder of our town's values, strength, and accomplishments. Let's seize this opportunity to honor our history while embracing the future of community engagement, local private, and economic vitality. And I want to finish with saying, this, the initial idea of this project was from Brad Pyatt, and he's pretty much the project manager, and I think he stands, I said earlier, in his living room and measures and acts like he's throwing a baseball. But I want to thank each of you. If you have any questions or any concerns, feel free to reach out to any of the members. We appreciate you so much, and we're looking forward to finishing this project in the next decade. Thank you.
Do you all have any site drawings? So we guess you're looking for a statue there, but what's there?
Yes, that, uh, that one of Billy is my ChatGPT rendition of the picture that he sent us, so it's probably a little, Brad has several rough sketches. We have somebody working on that. Uh, there's a lot of more complex things that need to be figured out and detailed before we can move forward. And just, we're working on the statue now, and they are going to give us a small statue, so we have a version of it to present to the public. And then after, when we have, somebody needs to come and do the groundwork, and we will have a rendition to you before and share that with you as soon as it is complete.
So someone has to go check how structurally sound.
Yes, we have someone working on that for structurally soundness, and then once that is complete, then we'll finish with the design. Like Mariah and Linda said, initially, we thought it should be in the back, kind of the center point of that park, but then they said, you know, aesthetically, as you're driving down Main Street, you want to be able to visually see the statue, and, you know, if you angle it just right, it looks like he's throwing a baseball through the Methodist church there, uh, and it would be kind of in that corner of the tree, probably you'll need to come down. But there's still room, lots of room there for the Christmas tree and the different events, and, you know, so if you have any ideas you want to share with us on what and how to design that part, we're open for that, because the spine drawings are not yet set. We're just really in the initial stages as we move forward on this project.
And I wanted to mention, we've talked about it again at our IEBA meeting last month, and the IEBA is still in full support of our site being used for this work. Everyone on our board was pretty excited about something becoming of the park, and so we wanted to offer support in their continued planning for the site, obviously letting the committee move forward with the different milestones that they need to get to, but overall, we are very much so in support of it becoming something rather than how it is now.
On the grant applications, is there gonna be any talent match that you all are expecting?
We don't know yet. AJ Robinson is working with me on that, and she has a lot of different grants and opportunities out there, so we'll have to look at some of those, and of course, if that is the case, we'd reach out to you before applying, because we want to make sure that the town is capable or able to do that, or wants to. But initially, it's just, you know, you've got tourism, it's a great attraction when somebody comes in for back of the drag, and he can just drive through town, find someplace to eat. Now, I would love to see a, a nice burger joint go next door selling hot dogs and burgers and kind of a Scorsese paraffin idea, but that's just me. But I think it would be kind of neat to have that as a kind of starting point to go over and see him. And then you've got the Little League Parade that goes down through town, so, you know, that would be a good starting point there, and the kids would get pictures and stuff. But there's a lot, there's a lot we're just starting, so.
Even though we're just starting, I know we've all participated in a lot of committees. We've met four times since April 27th, and we have a full range of time we need, so.
That's great.
Feels like we have momentum, and it's gonna be a nice, community-supported project.
But like, anything that involves the town, that's why we want to come and just update you all on the progress and keep you informed of every step that we do.
We were asking about the site itself in terms of the structural stability of it. We've already met with an engineer, we're expecting basically a proposal from him this week as to, it's air cast with a light house engineering, same gentleman whose firm did the work for the county for the library restoration. Had some general, had a meeting with him on last Thursday, and also working with Jim Rabel in terms of getting some topography done to see about, actually, leveling the site back to the level of the Main Street sidewalk. We actually had a conversation with the, with one of the gentlemen who was involved in demolition of that very building. And the filling, and there's a lot of concerns, there may be a lot of debris in that lot. There's been a lot of stories as to organic materials and things that shouldn't be there. And from our preliminary information at least, we've heard that number 57 stone was put there, back as a fill. But, okay, talk is cheap.
Sure.
So we're back, we're going through with the engineer to come in, probably about six weeks studying commended core drilling on various spots on the site, give us those results to reinforce what we believe to be the case about the site being suitable for to support a courtyard which would have a roughly 35 by 80 brick wall, precast concrete copper on top of, and support roughly a ton to a ton and a half statue with brick pavers that we would look as a fundraising part of for the floor and so on, so. But preliminary, at least the enthusiasm board has been very strong relative to the IDA's support of, of course, you all know when I came three months ago, I mentioned it, this was gonna be something that would be fitting, that we need to do, go big or go home, do it professionally in such a way that's gonna be an outstanding sort of draw for Main Street, as well as a fitting tribute to something that will never happen in our lifetimes again. Again, 178 out of 23,000 is a pretty big deal for Billy to do what he did, and to recognize it this way, to make it part of Main Street, part of the tourism draw, is one of what we think that, I know I personally think, I think the committee does as well, as to what he can do to recognize what he did and do it in such a way that's gonna be beneficial for, for Main Street too. And we're covering everybody, so we're gonna put it in terms of being able to figure out what's necessary, what needs to be done, how it can be done. So it's gonna be not just a statue, but a crown jewel for Main Street that everyone will look forward to seeing it start, and it comes to fruition hopefully by October of next year's, where our deadline's up.
And we were truly blessed to come across Mariah and Linda, because they have done so many statues, they know the legalities of everything, so like, the potential of getting sued by the Astros if you don't get their permission to have the red cup and jersey with the Nike shoes, of the, of his baseball glove, just little things like that that, you know, I just wouldn't have thought of that by the way, and so they're just tons of knowledge, tons of knowledge.
The amount of research they did, after speaking with us one time, blew me away. They have already prepared cutouts, life-size cutouts of Billy in the, in the representation of the picture to give them a physical representation of what it would be if ground up two feet, four feet, raised, turned in certain angles in relation to the site before they had that even, you know, it's one where what they are going to be paid, of course, to be this, obviously, they're not doing it for us, but all the work that they've done without even having any type of other than my handshake with them to say, we're gonna make this happen, it's, it's beyond belief and faith in terms of their, I guess, belief in the project and what we've had a vision for and what they can do to make it happen. So it's, they've been a real pleasure to work with so far, and I would continue to expect nothing but the same going forward.
So there'll be, we can give you a lot of dates if they?
Yes, sir.
Maybe for 26? October 2026.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. It's good to see everybody. Anybody interested in a comment this weekend, come on out.
Alright, so, uh, moving forward, next on the agenda is a affordable housing partnership proposal, Tom Bonney Patterson, Executive Director of the Home Care and Learning Corporation.
Hello, how's everybody doing?
Doing good.
Appreciate y'all for having us. Oh, the beer is gone.
Is that the first you ever might notice?
Looks like they got it in high school.
I know, right? Before I get started, I just wanted to make a comment on Billy Wagner, he's more than just a baseball, he's a real special guy. When I broke my foot, my junior in high school, I'm in the locker room trying to work my way back in, and this guy just walks in the weight room and talks to me and gives me like heart to heart. He's always been drafted and everything, and, you know, he's a really special guy, you know, huge impact on the community, more than just baseball, I just had to say that before I began. Today, I want to talk about the revitalization of Tazewell, affordable living, for a sustainable future. My name's Conroy Patterson, for anyone who doesn't know, I'm here on behalf of Each One Teach One Incorporated, myself and President Ricky Davis. And this proposal outlines a strategic public-private partnership between the town of Tazewell, Tazewell County, the IEBA, Virginia Housing Authority, Clint Valley Community Action, and our nonprofit Each One Teach One, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit taxes-in organization. This plan is to address our county's urgent need for affordable housing. The plan proposes that we develop a Sugar Hill model, own, I'm sorry, a Sugar Hill model manufactured duplex with permanent brick foundation on county-owned land above Sierra Springs apartment complex. I got this idea talking with Eric Young, we were just having small talk about what the town needs, what the county needs, and it was probably about four years ago, and when he told me how bad we needed that, because there's so many grandparents living in trailers, raising kids, and they're not built to sustain the weather we're enduring these days, and, you know, when people want to move here, as we all want to grow our town and invite professionals to come help us open small businesses and things like that, they don't have anywhere to come to, nothing that's affordable, and a lot of times... And, you know, when people want to move here, as we all want to grow our town and invite professionals to come help us open small businesses and things like that, they don't have anywhere to come to, nothing that's affordable. And a lot of times, they don't want to move into like older houses and things that we do have available. So this plan proposes, by leveraging existing infrastructure and resources, we need to minimize costs while providing quality housing for low to moderate income families. We'll go to project overview next. Of course, the location is Tassau, Virginia. We're going to use, this is actually one of the manufactured duplexes that we're going to go with. They have two front porches. They're both three-bedroom, two-bath. We're looking to go eight units because Virginia Housing Authority said they would like to work with us and give us a five hundred thousand dollar grant for this whole project. And he came down and met with us, I think it was two years ago. You were president, weren't you, Michael?
Don't think so.
No? Okay. He came down and, really good guy. He went to school, I'm sorry, I went to school with John Stilner, who works with him, and it's kind of like an inside connection. Our target demographic is low to moderate income families, seniors, and individuals with disabilities. Next, we're going to go to our site utilization plan. This land is owned by the county, and the town, if I'm not mistaken, owns the road that comes into it. Is anyone aware of that? There are two roads that come into Sierra Springs on both sides. And the plumbing that Sierra Springs has would also take a lot of the cost there.
That's water and sewer, but do we make in that road a good accident rate? I don't think so.
I'm not sure that we do.
Yeah, I think that's one of the brown lines.
I think so. I could be wrong, but I think so.
We would not check, but nevertheless.
There was something that Eric said that might be, we just weren't sure yet. Next, we'll go to estimate, estimate the cost of per duplex. This is what makes us able to bring affordable housing. We're looking at a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for two three-bedroom, two-bath rooms. Most single-family homes would cost about that much these days. Twelve thousand for the brick foundation, plumbing and water depending on, you know, how that would negate with the town. Forty-five hundred electrical, three thousand site prep, two thousand delivery setup. As long as it's within six hours, it'd be thirty-five hundred, and permits incidentals, two thousand. For instance, about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars total. And next, we go to our financing strategy, grants, fundraising, and creative solutions. Virginia Housing Authority, of course, we look forward to working with them. I think five hundred thousand dollars would allow us to be able to keep our affordable housing right where we need it in order to give this community a boost and make it more sustainable. Federal Home Loan Bank, AHP. I talked to Eric Young. He said there's a possibility that they could do an in-house financing with us as well just to make it a little bit more profitable. Land permits, infrastructure, as well with the county, private donations, and sponsorships. We look forward to working with community development, block grants, the CDVG, federal funding distributed through Virginia, DHCV, and fundraising campaigns, partner with local churches, businesses, and individuals to sponsor units. As well as Virginia Housing Authority, they have funds that are available for the prerequisites, just the small costs that come before you actually get to the breaking ground. The rental income and profitability at nine hundred dollars per month, eighteen hundred dollars per duplex. The mortgage on the two hundred and twenty-two thousand leaves you at about five to six hundred dollars per duplex, which comes out to about eighty-eight thousand eight hundred. Next, we're going to talk about benefits of Tassau County. Increased in affordable housing, job creation during and after construction, reduced homelessness, efficient land use, and improved reputation, which I think will allow us to actually pull more people into our town. This is a list of our partnerships that we would love to bring together to help this project work. The Duplex Company is Down East Custom Homes. Clinch Valley Community Action will provide resident support. Habitat for Humanity, we do ownership development. Tassau County, in-house financing as well as land. Town of Tassau, possibly in-kind donations or facilitating in any way. We also, we also like the way the park bill worked with being a liaison for funds to make, make it more comfortable for people to be able to make large donations and things of that nature. And next slide. Also for our nonprofit, sustainability business ideas. One thing we want to do is we want to be able to give out more scholarships to the youth here. Since we do that internally, you know, we're limited on what we can do, but we would really love to be able to generate some sustainability so we can do more things in the community and not depend on grants and long-term projects. Self-service laundry facility would be one of the ideas. Automated convenience stores for household products that are needed for people who are living in these duplexes. Package delivery lockers and shared workspace for remote work. Next slide, please. Our partnership in land use, these are actually real pictures of land back behind Sierra Springs. The collaboration with the town, the county, and the IEBA are instrumental. We would like to secure a right-of-way for accessibility. And if you let me know, Leanne, if you can find out about that road, that would be really important. And county loan support for sustainable operations would be really good as well because if we can do in-house financing, that takes a lot of pressure off of time and things of that nature. So we're making a call to action, you know, join us to transform Tassau through sustainable housing. I think that's one of the most important things. It's something that's needed in every state, in every county, every town. Our support from the town, the county, and the IEBA are essential, and we are definitely willing to put the time in and the work in that it's going to take to develop and manage this project. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Have you approached the county yet about using the land?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I talked to them, and I meet with the IEBA at two P M. tomorrow or two thirty to present. And we're meeting with Clinch Valley Community Action in the morning to meet with their supervisors. And we plan on being at the next board supervisors meeting as well. And, you know, we're not going to look overnight. We're not in a rush, but this is something we're really passionate about, and I think everyone here knows that, you know, we don't have a lot of new construction here. So when it comes to people coming in, you know, we have small businesses coming up to Main Street. If we want to keep them here and keep the town growing and give people something to be proud of, you know, this is something we need to really look at, is bringing in some new construction, bringing in a affordable price, so it's not just for doctors and lawyers or whoever in the very professional brackets, but for people who want to work.
So nine hundred dollars is affordable?
That's what they say. If you compare it to what's going on, I think twelve hundred dollars is about the average price for a three-bedroom, two-bath around here. Can anyone verify that? Is anyone reading or...
How much did you say?
About twelve hundred dollars.
I think it's somewhere in that range.
Right, about three-bedroom, two-bath, so that would really give people an opportunity, especially elderly people on fixed incomes and people who are retired and veterans and things like that who want to come here and enjoy these mountains. Because myself, I'm a veteran, and I talk to a lot of veterans, and they love this area. And they have a limited amount of income, and they want to come here, and they want to make an influence. But at twelve hundred a month, that's a third of their paycheck. At nine hundred a month, they can support their three kids, their wife, and live happily and, you know, make it to their appointments and things like that.
I look pretty surprised we had applied with another entity for grant funding for, you know, central project in return for.
I heard about that. It's actually the same guy I'm working with. My friend from high school, his name is John Stilner. He brought him here personally to meet with us, and I've been working with him really closely ever since then, and he's giving me everything lined out. I think I heard about what happened with you guys. Do you remember exactly what the...
It was that that application was dependent on jobs being created, and so we had to submit a specific instance where there was a public announcement of jobs. And it was like five to ten minutes further than what they allow, so...
How was the objection, but...
Right, right. So that's something I definitely want to address upfront with him. Let him know, you know, is this going to be a problem? And we talked, and he's really interested. Like, he's really pushing the bar for us.
Thank you.
You will.
Yeah, so the zoning on it, Brad, maybe I can use your help on that one. It looks like it's B two, Business General.
Coming above Sierra Springs?
Above it.
Okay, what was your question to be on the zone?
Would this work in that zoning? Would we have to look at rezoning of that?
It would depend on density, yeah, density is what you have to amend that to go from. I mean, B two is very long, seven terms for everything from setbacks to many others. You don't have the same type of restrictions like you do for R one, R two, or R three. So if it's B two, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be an issue.
From a zoning standpoint?
Shouldn't be.
From a management perspective, I've actually been in real estate for about fifteen years, three different states, and this is something I've been wanting to do, is use the skills that I've got from my career and come back and help my community with them. And I just think it's an amazing thing if we can bring it all together and come together and make it happen. Any more questions?
And it would be an ownership situation for the person at the house, right?
It could be understood or it could be granted.
Okay.
Either way, you know, that's something we want to work with Clinch Valley Community Action on. Sometimes they have battered women coming to the shelter. They have veterans, just people who are struggling, whatever. We want to be able to help the community, whatever comes, you know. We want to be able to put a special situation together and just help our community have resources. And we're open to any suggestions that anyone has because we're at early phases. You know, just putting together as much information as possible to see what we can come up with.
Somebody lives in and they rent to buy?
I'm sure we can make an option like that. That's an option that's very common in real estate. You know, own financing or rent to own. I wrote many of those contracts. They aren't really complicated. We can just do it with an attorney.
It doesn't look like that road is town-maintained, just looking at the G I S map because a lot of the other roads that town maintains, they have that kind of cut out of the parcel, and this one is fully incorporated in the parcel. So, I mean, that might not mean anything.
It would just mean that a little bit more expensive.
Well, you'd have to do like a right-of-way or something, which doesn't, doesn't mean you can't use it.
Right. Something we definitely will look into, landlot?
It's not landlot. I mean, that parcel that the county owns, which the, the G I S says CSX owns it right now, but there's, I mean, there's a driveway back to a couple of barns that are existing.
Is George Van Dyke, is it right behind George Van Dyke's updated property?
It's, well, it's, George doesn't own that.
No, is it his mother's or a...
No, because CSX owns it, and the county bought it from them.
C N X.
C N X, sorry.
C N X.
Yeah, County I D A.
Yeah.
G I S hasn't been updated yet.
Yeah, G I S hasn't updated yet, but that doesn't...
Right.
Really mean anything.
It doesn't.
I also spoke with Tim Davidson from the Board of Supervisors, and he gave me a modular home model. That was on one of the slides. Can you get back to the slide, modular? It's a little bit different. It's actually a two, back one more. Okay, that's it. It's actually a two-story, it's still duplex, still three-bedroom, two-bath. But that would be depending on the bottom dollar cost so we can keep it in affordable range. So we're looking at some different options and different models to make it as sustainable as possible. The stone foundation typically would make a modular, I'm sorry, not modular, but a duplex, manufactured duplex would give it the stability that it needs.
Right, and then it becomes real estate, not a...
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, and they make some beautiful modular houses.
They do. You want to have different options?
Yeah, my mom has.
We're gonna be in there a little more.
All right, thank you. I'll keep you guys posted.
All right, next is Camp Joy Summer Camp Support Request.
Ms. Lester was not available to be here this evening after all, but she did fill out a donation request form. This is for the Clinch Valley Community Action Camp Joy Summer Camp. It says that the funding gift group will allow seven children to attend camp for the summer. Attached, you will find the demographics of our campers. Since we are now providing transportation from our office here in town to camp, the local children have increased in attendance. They are asking for seven hundred dollars. The date of their event says June sixteenth through July the eighteenth. And there are thirty-one kids in the town of Tassau that have attended the summer camp last year.
Who would donate last year?
They had a request before.
I'll read it. Who requested?
Not for a camp tour.
Does it say what this seven hundred would be allocated towards?
I think it's just their, their camp fee for the seven kids. So it's a hundred dollars per child. I don't believe that.
So they pay for seven kids to attend the camp for, and the date, June sixteenth through the eighteenth?
July eighteenth. It's a span, I guess.
I didn't know it was that long. You know, that's a long camp, isn't it?
That's, that's what their application says.
Excuse me, maybe I can enjoy it in one week's session. They'll run like four different, what, how many weeks? They'll, they'll run different weeks, just for people who's involved that are familiar with that. Maybe you're really interested.
So it's a hundred dollars per child, right? Yes, that's how I think it's going.
A hundred dollars per child, yes. And thirty-one from the town of Tassau.
So there's thirty-one kids from Tassau that attended, but they are only asking...
That attended last year.
Yeah, last year. And they're only asking for seven, correct.
That would, seems like from their budget that they put in and recover is the transportation cost a little bit more, I guess?
It says that they are transporting from their office here in town to the camp.
Yeah.
I don't think that the, the kids that go to camp, I don't think that there is any cost to the kids to go to camp.
Correct.
So, you know, if you're talking about thirty-one kids from the town that went last year, if you look at your guidelines, that would fall into the eleven and fifty, which the donation range is up to five hundred. Of course, we can always change that.
We're affecting second. So the donations are like the second kids.
How many people in town?
It says, it says thirty-one go to health costs.
Exactly.
That's what's...
Yeah, that's what it meant.
And if they're asking to cover the costs for seven, but you have thirty-one.
I'll make a motion to do seven hundred on this project.
Okay, got a motion one for us, huh?
Second.
I'll make a motion second.
Now, second, and discussion.
Yeah, the only problem I have with going for seven hundreds, it's outside of our range for the thirty-one kids that were seven kids, however you want to look at it. As a max, I would look at five hundred, but, I mean, I understand they ask for seven, but that goes out of our guidelines, and I'd like to make a point to stay within our guidelines. But then we said if you go outside our guidelines...
You can. You can make extensions to anything, Damien. You know that.
I just feel like the thirty-one kids from the town, it costs them nothing. For a lot of these kids, it's their summer to be out of their home.
And I agree with that, and I agree to making a donation to that, to that fund. I mean, it's a great fund, but I don't think the town... I don't think the town necessarily has to bear that responsibility for everyone. I think 500 is within our typical guidelines for up to 31 kids, and I think that's a sizable donation and I think it's...
Kids, or there's 20 kids that don't have anything. And I've dealt with them too. And I think a child left behind, you don't do that. And that's the reason why I want to do 700, because this is a child that's not had any fun enough. So to me, squeeze that limit and get $700 and let's go with it.
If we do $500 to stay within our limits, I'll do $100 to get up to the seven, you know, if anybody wants to go on?
Yes.
Dave, would you like to amend it to 500?
Amended to 500.
And then I'm going to go 100, he's going to go 100.
You'll still get your 700.
Yeah.
And if you'd like to go 100, we'll go 800.
I'll do 100.
And you'll be like that.
Just amend it to 500.
Appreciate. Add in your motion.
700?
No, amend your motion to 500 and then...
500 and we'll take care of the other part.
All right, so I have an amended motion for $500 with...
Indemnity of contributions.
Hitching in, so all in favor of $500, please say what's in mind.
Second.
You have second or... Oh, okay.
Second.
Second.
All right, any more discussions?
No.
All in favor of approval of $500 for Camp Joy Summer Camp, states of what's in mind?
Aye.
All opposed, states of what's in mind? All right, so next on our agenda is local business recognition, Task Conveyor.
So, I brought this up a couple of meetings ago, I guess. Task Conveyor is owned by gentleman Malcolm Brown. And Malcolm's born and raised here, and I just, you know, I wanted him recognized because he's been in business for probably 30 years or longer. And it's a mining business, and, you know, he's been the highs, the lows. And, you know, he employs several men, you know, pays them fair wages that they can raise a family on. But Malcolm travels a lot, so if I could look at this stuff that we give, I'm going to take it to Malcolm.
For sure. We will make that happen. All right, so next is the approval of minutes for council meeting on May 13th, 2025. All in favor of motion approved?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes for council meeting on May 13th, 2025, states of what's in mind?
Aye.
All opposed, states of what's in mind? All right. Minutes approved. So next, I undertake a motion for the approval of the financial statements and financial report for May 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second. You have discussion on it. Just one of the, one of the items, and this kind of goes into that solar project that we discussed a while back. You can see a check for Robinson Cox and Brown. In, in our discussions previously on it, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the agreement was, is that like the organization that's wanting to install the solar was paying for the legal expenses on our side. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And they're billing us?
Okay, so Robinson Farmer Cox is our auditor.
Auditor, I got them mixed up. The, the name of the outfit that we're using for...
Elliot Energy.
Hefty Wally Core is the oil firm out of Richmond that is representing the town. I can see their logo on the outfit. Okay, then maybe later we can discuss any updates here.
I can bring you up just a little by the little.
Okay. We'll take it later.
Any other discussion? So all in, all in favor of approval of the financial statement and financial report for May 2025, states of what's in mind?
Aye.
All opposed, states of what's in mind? All right, so those are approved. Next, committee and conference updates. Councilmember Davis, planning commission committee?
The planning commission met on the second, and we discussed Riverside Propane, which is a little bit later in our agenda. They're looking to put in a propane business on Riverside, and it met all of the requirements. And the planning commission voted to move it up to council for approval. We also talked about the planning amendments that were going to be made in our code, is the code right? So there also, we discussed all of those, and that was also motion in seconded, send up council for approval. And we just discussed briefly the comprehensive plan. That's it.
On that note, I'll just add in from Councilmember Davis's comments. Had a approved ordinance draft from the commission that I went over again before submitting it tonight. I did that with Chris and also with Leanne. And found a couple of basic places that still need to be shored up a little bit more to meet what I felt was necessary to clean up a few places that I didn't really catch before until I spoke with Chris and Barry to them. So that's why you may not have it before you tonight for actual consideration for a vote. And for, not for a vote, for setting for public hearing. So we will have that. I'm going to go back and forth with the planning commission again next month and show you some additional revisions that I propose to go into the other revisions that are already made and have that ready for council for next month for setting for public hearing and that.
Perfect. Anything else? So next is the IDDA authority.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Are we so excited about what we get to do in North Castle because of the backup commission grant? Great. Yeah, thank you, Leanne, thank you, Susan. That's our one big thing that happened between your all camps being last month and this month, as well as Leanne and Susan making a great field trip for our auto board from the Cumberland Community Fund Partners. So all of those funds are going to our Country River Pavilion in North Castle. So again, this has been a multi-year form of work, kind of great collaboration between us, IDA, you all, and several other organizations. So thanks again for your continued support. I think it's going to be a really important addition to the North Castle district. Leanne's going to talk more about that later in the agenda. Do I have to talk about anything else now or you don't?
Go ahead.
Oh, so we haven't officially received any funds yet, but preliminarily, Leanne has contacted a couple of different people for quotes. And that makes us feel really excited about the amount of money that we have allotted and the product that we're going to be able to make. We still have plans to submit for US, no, yes, US, USDA, right? At the end of the month, sorry, too many. So we're going to submit for the USDA, USDA grant to maybe help cover Phase Two. So Phase Two of our P A R included the bathrooms. We are really going to try to stretch the amount of money that we have as far as we possibly can, based on the cost of materials. And again, making it the nicest product that we can down there. But we are going to try to submit another application at the end of this month. And we're still pending the hearing from A F I D, and I think from them, we were going to $50,000. Yeah. So, a couple other pending things.
And this is the name, Clinch River?
Pavilion.
Pavilion. Clinch River, that's what I was wanting to hear.
Yep, and as I've been talking about for a long time, our farmers market partners, we have a meeting with them later this month to help them talk about how they will fundraise potentially for signage. They've talked about how they want to have a building down on the property, so that would be something that they would provide. So we're keeping them in the loop as we proceed with actual implementation of the funds. So anybody else that you think might need to be involved in that committee, subcommittee, let us know. But Erin and Christina, the market leadership, are the people that we liaise with. Other things that we're excited about is the potentially developing our property, other property across the street on Riverside Drive. So we did our May meeting down in the location to kind of give our board a scope of what it looks like. So we feel as though that it could be a potential home for several businesses, just based upon the space that it has. I know that there have, there may be some people that may be interested in being kind of like outfitters. I have heard, I didn't know what this was, but I've heard it mentioned twice, a canary. So Leanne and I, and Susan, we met with funders through Go Virginia, and they were explaining that they can't provide funds to build a building, but if there was a project that would need equipment, that would benefit a community, so like a commercial kitchen. He mentioned canary, and then Corillian is facilitating a Tassau Health Collaborative. Lots of different stakeholders in our community. And John Lincolnship attended that meeting, and he mentioned that there could be a potential need for a canary as the county is still pursuing having a meat packaging processing facility. So maybe that could be another kind of make sense business that goes across the street from the...
We just said about that this evening, maybe we meant about that. And John, and everyone was super enthusiastic about the canary and also the...
Yeah, I told him.
Is canary what I'm thinking?
Yes. Yeah, someone else...
Lots of, we used to have one.
Yeah, that's what Alicia Bell said. So I, again, it's just kind of like, it's, it's fun to see that if, when the IDA has kind of property, we might be able to use them to benefit needs that we weren't thinking of. And so as we keep putting our dealers and collaborating as many people as we can, hopefully we can keep moving forward.
When we talked with Tim Davison, we were talking about moving the boundaries to the BEZ Virginia across there. And, you know, we had discussed with that IDA meeting about getting a section in North Castle. And, you know, we're getting up for November, it's directed to January, you know, but if we could press them on that and get that section in North Castle to that zone, then that even, that opens up even more opportunities for real property investment, real job creation grants. And I don't know how many people a canary would employ, but...
I don't know either. Someone asked that, I was like, I don't know what it is, guys, but...
I can only grow vines now, it's going to be like two people. But, but I do think the IDA could press the county on that and get that zone designated to open up even more access.
So Susan and I are actually going to meet on Thursday, get together just to talk about that. And I was going to try to have something to present to IDA at the July meeting, just to talk about the boundaries of the BEZ. And kind of shifting some of our district, but that's absolutely on the radar.
Yeah.
The county, I've been in a couple BEZ meetings with them. They have to have a public hearing, and they would like to do that, I think I said, in September. So we need to be very proactive, they get our reflections, they have to know our property owners have a public hearing. So yes, that's absolutely on the radar.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, we met with Kelly and the representatives from the DHCB several times about how we could pursue funding to fix up the building, the structural property on Riverside Drive. So the more that we're able to actually work with stakeholders and have business plans and a vision, that's going to make it a stronger application that we might pursue next year. But obviously, this is only possible because we have momentum at the Country River Pavilion. So again, thank you very much for your help and invitation.
You didn't miss anything, it's just you didn't notice little tidbit.
Okay.
So Susan and I met with Kelly and Jordan yesterday.
Okay.
And the funding that she's talking about is A R C funding. It will be available to apply February 26th.
Cool. So yeah, that would be, I would like for us, for our IDA, to either have met with different business owners who might be interested in occupying that space and putting in an application, you know, together. That's how it would be successful, because, you know, otherwise it's really just going to, we don't want it to just continue to be empty and unused, so.
We have like a deadline, so that opens up in February. We have a deadline where we say, okay, this far and further, I'm not applying for grants anymore. We need to revert council, possibly get more funding, like, but we need to, we need to get moving on the building of this, so it's completed by X date.
Are you talking about like the pavilion or are you talking about there?
The pavilion.
It's different.
Not, not the building, I'm talking about the pavilion. So we were talking about the pavilion, what do you...
Yeah, February. Yeah. So as far as actual, when we get dollars in hand, we have not had our kickoff meeting with the backup commission yet. But I'm already kind of putting out fillers to say, well, how much wood does this actually cost? So I've contacted three vendors. One has got that to me, I've reached out again today to the other just to say, hey, just a general rounder.
Yeah, I know the community's really excited about it, and it would be nice to, you know, you don't want, you never want to have a promise, right? And that's, we've learned. But I would be interested to discuss that and see, you know, when we, when we set a date and say, all right, at this point, we're stuck, we're done with planning, we're done with grant funding, here's the dollar amount we need, let's press.
I have more to say during my updates.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, I'll sit down now. Bye.
Now, we're going to move on to, let me finish this script. The first is the second reading and approval of the 2025-2026 budget. So...
Go ahead, Mike, read it off.
Hey, I'm not for sure what I would be expected to read here.
I would make a motion to not read it.
Wait a second, read it. I have a motion...
I'll second the motion to wait the second reading.
All right, so I have a motion, motion and second, wait the second reading of the budget. So now I need to, any discussion? So all in favor of waiting the second reading, states of what's in mind?
Aye.
All opposed, states of what's in mind? All right, so now we need to vote on the 2025, or 20.5-2026 budget and approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the 25-26 budget as presented.
I'll second.
Got a second, any discussion?
I would like to make a comment. So... Make sure I'm reading the right one. Okay, so pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.23112 and 2.23115 H of the State and Local Government Conference of Intersects, the council is considering the budget today, which involves Castle today. I serve as executive director of Castle today, and I'm a salary employee there. Therefore, a member of the group affected by the proposed transaction between the Tassau Town Council and Tassau today. However, there are at least two other similarly situated entities or groups of people that will also be impacted by the transaction being considered in addition to Tassau today. Identifying the groups is pretty much everyone else that is getting anything out of this budget. Therefore, I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you. So all in favor of approving the 25-26 budget, states of what's in mind?
Aye.
All opposed, states of what's in mind?
Neat.
So the budget still passes. So next, we're going to move on to the second reading of the rezoning of Haras Lane Properties.
Make a motion to wait the second reading. Second.
All right, I have a second, any discussion? All in favor of waiting the second reading of the rezoning of Haras Lane Properties, states of what's in mind?
Aye.
All opposed, states of what's in mind? All right, so now I undertake a motion for approval of the rezoning of Haras Lane Properties.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, got a second, any discussion? All in favor of approval of rezoning Haras Lane Properties, states of what's in mind?
Aye.
All opposed, states of what's in mind? Thank you. So next, we're moving on to new business. Need a motion to set a public hearing for sewer bonds for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 7:50 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Got a second, any discussion? Got a second, any discussion? All in favor of setting a public hearing for the sewer bonds for wastewater treatment plant upgrade for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 7:15 PM, space up by say nay? All opposed, space up by say nay? We look at that schedule. So next, Farmers Market Project update, Manderick. I think we've covered too much of that.
Well, let's talk about this Clutch River Pavilion project a little bit more. So as you can see over here, we have a big jet, and it is from Cumberland Forest Street for $15,000. And, yeah, hold up. So that's for the river, well, the river access portion of the project. Susan and I went to St. Paul last week and received that, so that was, that was a great honor to be chosen and awarded for that. The Tobacco Commission has awarded us $296,500 for our pavilion, and Town Council has allocated the same for match. As I stated just a little bit earlier, I have reached out to a few vendors, and I want to have gotten back to me. I've asked this question, and I've asked it to all three, I haven't gotten the answer that I need yet. At what point, size wise, do we go from wood to steel? Because I know that that will have a cost. So that, I haven't been able to get that answer yet. But for a 40 by 86 pavilion, the company that I had reached out to gave me a quote of $249,000, and they built it. So that is, that is a potential. He did tell me that they have shelters, pavilions that could go bigger. So while we were in St. Paul, we did a little bit of homework. So we went to St. Paul, and we went to their park, and we looked at their river access. We could completely do that with that money right over there. And we went to their farmers market, and we went and walked around their town, and it was very nice, it was very quiet. We can, we can do this, and we can do it with this money that we have allocated. And on our way back, we stopped in the Town Eleven, and we looked at their farmers market. So their farmers market is not just one pavilion, one shelter, it's multiple, and it's very long. So that has given us the idea of, okay, if the price does go up when you go from wood to steel because of the size, maybe we need two pavilions together. That way we don't have to build a steel. Maybe we can work out some size arrangements for that, and, I mean, I really won't know my answer until they tell me what the difference is between wood and steel. But this is very good, it's a great start. It's, um, much under what we thought from our P A R that we received, so I have very high hopes.
The money that we have should do the whole project and the river walk.
I think I wish to start with, you know, we pay, refresh my memory, 26K?
Yes.
For these drawings?
Yes.
For a 10,000 square foot building that wasn't have been achievable, but it's based on our funding.
Correct.
And if we're doing the legwork to reorient and design the buildings in the space, we get that money back, like, like, why did we pay them? Like, like, it's, it's, I guess I'm not super acquainted on the ins and outs of that program and how that process works. I know you bought the products, you paid the dollars for it, you're not getting the money back. But it's discouraging to pay it in here and earn $26,000 and then have to go re-engineer the whole project.
And so that P A R from Thompson and Litton was done because Thompson and Litton said that we, our Tobacco Commission, said that we had to have one to submit with our application.
That's, that's the problem with a lot of these kind of grant programs. They require certain engineering studies that they feed off of the expense of one to get to the other. And that's what you have, it's a prerequisite to be able to apply.
Right.
Now, saying it's rise or just, that's part of the process that's been put into place for us. It makes more sense.
Except what you get, you know, you get a $2.7 million drawing, and then you go get $200,000, $263,000. So, well, thanks for looking into it. I'm excited with what we come up with.
Where, what one of that could happen?
Good. So any more questions about Farmers Market? So next, Manderick and Warhol Park Project update.
Warhol Park is located down on Carlin Avenue, and we have a grant throughout the Thompson Charitable Foundation, and we have been working with each one, teach one. And we have basketball court that is laid out, we have two pickleball courts that is laid out. I believe we're working on nets and striking for those. We have a pavilion that's very much smaller, but Tassau County Career and Technical Center Carpentry Class. They were able to come out and use this as a project, and they were able to construct what we've got down there. And I spoke with our fellow works director and said, hey, you know, Juneteenth is having their celebration down at the park, and we need to try to make sure to have the roof on top of that shelter. So everything, you know, they said that that is their plan, to make that happen. There is going to be bathrooms there, but not for their event. But we will be getting bathrooms down there for them, and Tassau County, I have a check on my desk, they have allocated $15,000 to go toward utility hookups and material, sort of that, so.
I have a question, Anne. As far as the land of the deed from First Baptist Church, what's the process or progress on that?
Um, so we had air attorney draw up the deed, they made forms, uh, not forms, but records. And I've spoke with Vera Mitchell, and there's a few household keeping items from the church that needed to be done, and that was where we're at.
Any other questions? All right, so next, the Route 460 Waterline Replacement Project update.
So yesterday marked a very big day for our town because this project had been years in the making, and they broke ground yesterday. So yesterday and today, they laid 320 feet in two days. And they really were kind of expecting like, gosh, we'll be doing good to get 100 feet. They did tell me like, hey, we know that there's rock up here, it's coming. But so far, great progress, so very proud of this guy.
Excellent. Any questions? All right, wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
So last week, I signed an award letter for orders construction. They were the lowest bid on our wastewater treatment plant project. We did go to that D E Q, air contact there, was very gracious to help us to allocate some more principal forgiveness funding and loan funding to make everything in this project complete and happen. And as you all know, just set a public hearing for Air Sewer Bond to be read July 8th at 7:15. So once we have our two public hearings, we will be able to move forward with getting loan closing for that project, and that will be an 18-month project.
Any questions? All right, so next, land use tax, discussion, discussion, Commissioner Willis.
So I've been approached by several individuals, why doesn't the town not offer that?
So in my past job responsibility, and I had brought that before council before, and at the time, council had noted they did not wish to entertain that.
But if we take direction from the county, and the county offers it, what would it cost the town?
Um, Councilmember Klein had actually provided some information.
All right, I said to Tom, I've known Commissioner Anderson this, this morning, their team's super helpful. The numbers that he gave me is that the total value of the real estate that's impacted is $2.15 million. But the actual total cost of the town, because our property taxes is .0029, right? Is what you multiply that times the value. But the total cost of town is $6,252.98 on an estimate. They have software within the queries. So, okay, about $7,000 is the cost of the town. The other thing that I ran into was looking at the, like, they actually got a website that talks about the different uses. Let me click on the, uh, the earlier message that I sent. So they got, they got three different types of land use, what'd you call this? Tax reduction opportunities. So you've got, for agriculture and horticulture, and the county assesses the property value at $470 per acre. You have it for forestry, and you have to have a forestry plan in order to apply for that. You can design it, there's a local individual that can sign off on it, $190 per acre. And then the third use is open space, and it's mentioned states that golf courses primarily use this, and it's at $1,400 per acre. So the cost of the town to implement something like that, based on their initial estimate, just shy of $7,000. The, uh, the county uses the State Land Evaluation Authority Council. They, they have a manual that they produce. I included it on to a website, we can check it out, it's 180 pages of text. So, but basically, the county uses that manual, the State's Land Evaluation Authority Council, to set the parameters and guidelines to, to facilitate that program. The other thing that I didn't include is when the county does have to do, they call it roll back tax. So if you have it, so you have agricultural land, you get taxed instead of, by the use rate for the acreage, but you change the use of that land, the county's gonna like, will roll back the taxes five years. What I like on that. I didn't talk at length with them on what that looks like, but as far as administrative burden, if you have it, the county changes, maybe there's a system that we need to have in place to make sure that our taxes line up with their taxes, because it seems like that's something that could slip through the cracks as just people sell, point into that type of stuff. There was some, there was an item of interest that paid out to me. So for, uh, because we're an agriculture area, and it's a major industry for our area, I think this is something we should consider. It's not a great cost, expense to the town, you know, $7,000 a year. We want to check that for sure, but, but I like the concept.
I just feel like the, the land that's in question is agriculture. And I just feel like if we take direction from the county, we need to offer that.
And last year, for our senior citizens in the tax relief, we, we aligned our reductions with the county.
Yeah.
You know, we're also trying to be a council and an IDA that's, that's pro-business, right? And looking at extending our DEZ zones, this is another way that we can do that, to be pro-business in Tassau. So I think it's something we should consider.
What would the process be for this? Because it is, it would be a, in the county run, kind of get put through.
I definitely want to check out their software. But it was, I was jumping on the G I S, I was like, oh, great, now I'm gonna go look at all those properties and come up with an estimate. But fortunately, Commissioner Anderson called me back and said, hey, by the way, I grabbed that number for you. And so they, they've got software, we probably want to look at that and make sure that, that's all buttoned up. But I'm sure you're gonna have to adjust your code.
So the Commissioner of Remonade provides the town with all the property assessments. We do have, we have exemptions such as the veterans exemption and the elderly exemption. And they actually give us all those property owners that, that get that exemption, like for the veterans. And then we have the air application for the elderly exemption. So I imagine that it will be something that the county can provide to us as far as who would qualify for those land exemptions.
But I mean, so to do this, to, I was gonna say, I guess that was not, procedurally, we have to adopt, we have to amend, make an amendment, adopt it, public hearings, does this have to go to General Assembly to get approved? No, okay. So we can have.
Some of your taxing powers within the charter. I would think I'd have to do some research on it, I think you just basically have to amend.
Okay.
With an additional ordinance under Chapter 10 of your code in taxation, just like you have exemption for the elderly, you have exemption for land use. That's my umbrella sort of idea, what we have to look at, so.
Okay. That's good. I'm, I was just trying. We have a calendar management that actually make that.
What would you like to be on the agenda? Or would you, would you like to be on to draft something for your.
Yes, I would.
Give me a second, I'll, I'll look into it.
I'll make the motion.
I'm second.
All right, I'd like to get clear of what's in this motion.
Yeah, like, I doubt my purchase. Says that you need a motion. What are you doing?
You've got your motion.
I think it would just be research, the land use tax extension at the county office, and see if the town code could be amended in such a way to accommodate, same thing if the town up.
Exactly. You agree with that?
Is that what your motion is?
Yeah. Question was, Steve. Okay, for what I said.
All right, it's any discussion? All in favor of giving Brad the approval to start looking into the land, land use deductions, space up by say nay?
Aye.
All opposed, space up by say nay? All right.
I'll have you something to consider. Might not be in file form, but maybe something to consider at least by next month maybe.
Okay.
To the same thing.
Thank you, Brad.
So next, mowing discussion, Mr. Willis.
So I've been approached so many times about the Amcave Streets, the park. Mark, do we have enough manpower?
We just had two more crew appointments today, and that would make eight on that crew. So we currently have six, so we'd move to eight.
They did do that backside of Lincolnshire, though.
Yes, they did. They were out there yesterday.
Is the, we need to in town and Lincolnshire separate?
Separate the main front of the park, it is actually recreation employees. However, for like the dam and the lake, that is the mowing crew.
And we think eight people can take care of everything in town and that section of the park.
Okay.
If, if I'm not mistaken, when we budgeted last year, we left some space in case we needed to contract out, right? Like, we, you left some funds, because we thought we were gonna manpower it the best we could, but we may need to contract out some help.
Think of what the public hire more people, not contract.
So in the budget that we're in right now, there's $100,000 part-time in mowing. And the budget upcoming is $110,000 part-time for mowing.
Okay.
Um, I, I do know that when we had bid it out before, that it was quite an expense at, is it right at about $1,000?
It was one maybe under $6,000 a week.
Under $6,000.
Yeah, so that's about.
And that was used for the park. So that's.
We didn't even include anything but.
Just part.
Okay.
What about the prisons, the sheriffs, they don't do that no more?
I don't think.
They can?
There's so many regulations and restrictions, we've tried to get them to bring inmates out to pick up trash, and we can't get them, first they make, come pick up litter.
What about community service folks with those requirements?
But it's sporadic. You just have very few that's involved in that. They may be, they may have four hours, they may have a hundred hours. They decide they don't want to do that, then they just don't do it.
We're sitting in the winter time, there's, in probation hours, and then this time you're, we're struggling to find probation, it gets a crash.
And, and that's what you're talking about, Zach, with the program that Jonathan is referring to is what you're speaking about.
I'm just not sure how you can do it.
I think, I think we need to be more flexible to be able to contract out, maybe not, you know, for the season, but be able to contract out. Maybe not, you know, for the season, but be able to contract out. You know, if you're down to six, I, I know how part-time work can be. You're going to be, you might be looking at eight, but you're going to be seven this week, six that week. We need to be more flexible to be able to. If, if the park gets to be in the shape it was, we need to be able to contract that out if need be.
I do know that we are having issues with drug testing. That they apply, they may do a test, but they don't get to come to work.
So what, what about, we, we even used that last year, right? Taking on THC.
We have a zero policy.
You can grow, harvest it, just can't smoke it.
I mean, I, I'm still, I'm still... If it's part-time work and seasonal work, that's my personal opinion. But I don't, like, folks drink alcohol and get totally tanked.
And we have a zero policy for that, too.
Right, but I'm saying, you can do that the night before, you can show up for work and leave, not sign a regret decision, but still show up for work, THC, hangovers, you know, I mean, we can talk about that.
There's no hanging with that?
So, Brad. I, I don't, full disclaimer, I, I don't, I don't, but, but I, I don't know. I mean, we, we discussed it, we didn't move on it. You can't find workers. That's, that's a limitation.
I've been here on pretty good women there.
Can I say something on it?
Sure.
One thing that you got to consider is the testing for THC. There's no test that will let you know if someone may have taken a drug or substance 29 days ago versus if they did it an hour ago. So you risk putting someone with machinery that could do damage with no way to test, you know, if they were under an influence. There's no accuracy. I see that you could, in the future, if they have a different test to show the accuracy or the time that they were under the influence, then I could see us being able to look at that policy.
I have been in meetings that Bershla has, has told town administration, stay away from... Stay away from changing their policy. I've been in several of those meetings, and the insurance carrier does it. Danny is so correct. You can grow it, you can smoke it, and it's legal, but you can't have it when you're working somewhere. It's, it's, it's a crazy thing, but it, once again, as all of us know, it, is it 30 days or was it 30 minutes ago? But the insurance carrier is totally against it. Now, I'm not saying that they, I mean, I don't want to step on the hands of over. They may be something new that I haven't been to in the past year and a half or so. But in the past, they, even when this started coming that it was legal, they were, they were so against it. Of course, police officers is just completely out of the question. I mean, we, we can't even, we can't grow it, we can't smoke it. I mean, it's, it's in the code for that. But they were definitely against any government agency in this respect of allowing the town to change those policies.
Well, my thing is, I just don't want it to get out of hand. So if we, we need to have sections that we need to hire out.
You set the contract. That's what I mentioned.
Yeah, it's okay. I think we need to look at.
It's like all the backstreets need to be, or, yeah, we've got to change them here.
It would be a conflict of interest that, therefore, I would not, I'm not interested. I just want our streets to live good. I'm done.
Also, I've, I've had seen some complaints and heard some complaints of residential grass that has not been cut. Kid, just for public, do you care to explain what, when can we step in as a town and say, you need to maintain your property?
It's code enforcement.
Yes, Chris Hurley can step in with that for property maintenance. He had sent out, before planning freshman year, he said that he had sent out several hundred lighters.
He's worked on that.
He has been working in the...
I have no doubt that. I just want to kind of put it out there, publicly with it, their org guidelines.
Is $6,000, since you're a contractor yourself, is $6,000 a fair price for a weekly maintenance of that property that you're talking about?
I wouldn't pay. You know, just because we, we put something out to bid, and bids come in, and $6,000 is the lowest bid, it doesn't mean we should take it.
Doesn't mean you have to.
Exactly. So what, I'll, I'll tell you what I'm thinking. So let's start at White's Muffler. If we go from White's Muffler to Food Line, I'd like to contract that section out, and I want it done three times a month, okay? So from White's Muffler to that area, the biggest area in front of the river, okay? So then on the other side, I'd like to go from White's Muffler to the end of Fairgrounds Road, and I'm going to throw in the bank for our signings. I'd like to give a price on that three times a month. Because if you weeded it, then weeded it right, it'll look, it'll look good, okay?
Are you talking like side streets too, or Riverside Drive?
No, it's Riverside Drive.
Okay.
It's from White's Muffler all the way up. And then the other section is out around Pop Shop, probably from where you get off the exit ramp, all the way to the intersection at Form 2. And you get prices in, because it, it shouldn't cost what their towns have cost. I know what three good men with equipment can do in a debt. And it shouldn't cost what we paid two years ago. There's no way I'd pay it. I mean, I'm not against a man making money, I'm not. But I am picking this up and paying. And then that frees up your town workers to do the side streets, Lincolnshire Park.
Okay, we'll work that, uh, a bit, set it up.
Don't cussing, like I say, if they come in too hard, tell them no.
Okay, we'll work it up.
Thank you.
All right, so next, Riverside propane recommendation from the planning commission. So we do need to vote on taking the planning commission's recommendation.
So Chris Hurley was unable to be here this evening. He was out of town. However, he did state that the planning commission has viewed the site plan, and they have approved, and they have now sent it up for your approval. We do have Mr. Smith here, if you all have any questions or concerns. But planning commission did approve, and they have sent that to you to ask for approval.
I want to make a motion, approve it.
I'll second that.
Okay, you have a second. Any discussions? All in favor of approving the planning commission's recommendation for Riverside propane, space up by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please, if I stand in that? Motion carries. So, I didn't see anything miscellaneous, so anybody sign that, Chief?
No motion.
No? No one signed that from the public? Remember, I have a council member, council member comments.
So we're up there. You don't mind? Is this a agreement?
So where are they?
Reached out to Jeff last week, and was going to follow up and get back to you. I'll give him a call tomorrow, but they, whatever reason, it has gone quiet. They pushed really hard to get things moving and get this done. And we had an agreement in place, a contract, about the, about the legal fees and what's going to be paid into the town. That's part of the negotiation, was in terms of paying fees that do all occur through me and also through empty-walled ore services. And then also to pay an upfront cost, and I don't have those figures determined to give you specifically, that I want to say initially $25,000. Signed the agreement, which has yet to be bottomed on. And then there's an additional, I want to say over the life, because I think when they first went online, it was another $25,000. And at the decommissioning, it was another, I think, $50,000, total of $100,000. I think that's right. Don't quote me on that too sick. But we never got anything back from them. They, around eight years they agreed, and we're good to go. So we pushed all that for months there. Back in the fall, late summer, early fall, and then we heard nothing from them. So not sure what, something happened with their projections, something happened with the owner. Have a change of heart, which I found hard to believe, and they put a lot of money in this thing. They're playing engineering and legal fees. But I don't know, I've not heard anything more. Jeff was going to look into it, Mr. Jeff's for, just going to look into it.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
I have a comment. Tonight, I'm announcing my resignation from Tassle Town Council, effective June 30th, 2025. I first ran for the seat in 2018 because I believed our local government should reflect the people it serves, especially the everyday voices too often run down. Women make up 52% of the town and Tassle's population, but remain underrepresented in local decision-making. When women aren't at the table, our town misses out on valuable insights, experiences, and solutions. Our town deserves leadership that represents its full diversity. I was honored to be elected in 2018, re-elected in 2022, and have done my best to serve with honor and integrity. In 2020, I was asked to serve as the volunteer treasurer of Tassle Today, which is an independent nonprofit organization dedicated to the revitalization of our town and strengthening the heart of our community. That same year, Tassle Today's application to become a Virginia Main Street organization was accepted. To maintain this designation, the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, along with Main Street America, evaluates Tassle Today's progress annually. Tassle Today plays a central role in shaping the vibrancy, economy, and identity of our town. It organizes nearly all the community events you see on Main Street and beyond. And it has been included in the town's comprehensive plan since 2016. When the position of executive director became available in 2024, I applied and was eventually hired. Since Tassle Today receives part of its funding from the town, I took every step to ensure that my involvement was ethical and transparent. I sought guidance from the town's attorney and the Virginia Conflicts of Interest and Ethics Advisory Council. Their guidance was clear. My dual service was both legal and ethical, as long as I recuse myself from related votes and refrain from participating in contract negotiations. I have followed that guidance. Unfortunately, despite this due diligence and transparency, a small number of individuals have chosen to elevate optics over facts and suspicion over substance. These actions have created an environment that undermines my ability to contribute meaningfully. I have been excluded from communications that directly impact the town and an organization at the center of this town's economic and community strategy. This is not just a personal frustration. It is a disservice to this council, the nonprofit, and most importantly, to our residents. The energy and time consumed by this manufactured conflict have come at the expense of progress, collaboration, and the real work for which we were elected. I am the only woman on this council. And I cannot help but wonder if my integrity and dual service would be viewed differently if I were a different gender. There is a stark contrast between the treatment I have received and that of an elected county official who simultaneously works for a department funded by the very body he helps govern. That arrangement appears to raise no public concern, yet my leadership in a nonprofit has sparked months of disruption. I say this not to deflect accountability, but to highlight a deeper truth. Bias, whether conscious or unconscious, can erode trust, distort judgment, and hinder public institutions from realizing their full potential. Let me be clear. I am stepping down because this distraction has been allowed to undermine both effective governance and the important ongoing work of Tassle Today. It is a disservice to this council, to the nonprofit, and the community we all serve. By stepping down, sorry, but stepping down also gives me new freedom. I can now advocate more freely and forcefully for Tassle Today and for the revitalization of Tassle. It means I can now speak openly at council meetings, engage directly with each of you as individuals, and speak more boldly and publicly about the economic opportunities that are within our reach. I am not leaving the work. I'm recommitting to it from a position where I can be more vocal, more active, and more effective. Thank you to those who believed in this work, supported me, and stood for a better future for Tassle. I will keep working toward that future, just from a different seat. Motion to adjourn.
Jeff, second. Any discussions?
Emily, I know that was, that was a big decision on your part. And thank you for your years of service to the town and your continued service through Tassle Today.
Hey, see you going.
Thanks.
All right, Jeff second. All in favor of adjournments, space up by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, space up by saying aye?